I'm going to start the meeting at 6 o'clock. Can I get someone to review and accept the agenda, please?
I move to accept the agenda.
Thanks, Noel. Thanks, Derek.
Laurie.
Yes.
I don't want to go through all the trouble of taking it out, but I was at the April 8th meeting.
Well, we'll talk about that when we get to consent agenda.
Okay.
Yeah, so that'll be done during then. Okay? All right. So, all those that approve and accept the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. Communications with parents, citizens, and staff. I see there's some people here who'd like to speak to us tonight. Who'd like to go first?
I've got a couple of things I want to talk about.
Okay. Can you say your name first?
Sure, Barry Whitney Jr.
Thank you.
The first is just the shower thing that I keep coming back to every week, and it seems like this isn't getting resolved. President Ruppel said that he was going to take care of it. He just went down there again. We've gone from two showers with curtains now to three out of the 10. Well, three additional, so we're still half them, don't even have a shower curtain. So I'm wondering what we've got to do here to get this done. It's a pretty simple fix, and it would stop me from bringing this up every time I come here.
Sure.
Let's get it fixed. The second is the incident that occurred April 12th here at Otter Valley in the locker room. Crystal Jackson stole a bunch of stuff, destroyed property. Concerns are, one, checks were written to reimburse students from the school, which is very odd to me as a taxpayer. The checks were written from the student activities account. So I would like to know where the money that sits in the student activities comes from. Two, why are we reimbursing for items stolen at Otter Valley out of that account? Who approved that? And the second part of that is, one, Mr. Ruppel was very responsive when this was all happening. I mean, no qualms, ifs, ands, and buts about it, very good. But I'm going off secondhand information here. I would like to know what was done. Like, did we check the backpacks of this person? I was informed that they couldn't be checked without parental consent. If, when we knew who this was, I mean, it was obvious who this was with video surveillance, why couldn't we recover this property here before we allowed her to leave? Second of all, shouldn't the person responsible for stealing the property and destroying school property, personal property, be responsible for paying that back? What are we teaching? Is this now a set of precedents that every time something gets stolen in Otter Valley, we're going to pay for it out of our school funds or the student? So I don't know if this is later on in the meeting. At next meeting, I've got to come back for these answers, but this is very disturbing.
So actually, what I'm going to tell you is that I don't think the board knows anything about this particular incident that you're talking about, because I don't know anything about this incident that you're talking about. So I will tell you that I'm going to ask Kristin to look into this and email you directly with answers to your questions at that point.
Can I also add? I mean, we're talking about a minor, so we really shouldn't be saying names.
You can't, I can. You can't, I can.
But it's in our meeting, and it's public, and so we have to strike it from the top.
Crystal Jackson, and I'm not on the board, I have every right to say.
I'm just saying.
You guys can't, but I can.
So I, allegedly.
I will put a "stew" here.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. Allegedly. Because we have no case that we're aware of.
So that's what I'm going to ask, because we don't know about this incident that you're talking about. So, and probably because if anything were to come up, and it needed to come to a board, to the board, we can't have any knowledge of this in order to be able to be the quasi-judicial board that we need to be if we had to do something about it. So I am going to ask Kristin to get in touch with Michael and find out what's going on and try and answer your questions to the best of their ability. Okay?
Can somebody, I mean, somebody here needs to know, or should know, where does the money in the student activity fund come?
So there's lots of student activities funds. Some of that stuff is all the fundraising that's done for the different classes, goes into student activities. All of the money that was raised for Scotland, for the theater thing, went through student activities and then paid back out of that.
So who has to give permission to write checks out of that?
Brenda Fleming. And I will tell you that in all, and I am aware of this situation, I don't have all of the answers to your question, but I do assure you that the insurance company was notified that the correct process and procedures, according to our rules and according to Vizbit's reimbursement, were followed. So I can track down the specifics and get back to you.
Sure. I would like to know what those policies, like the procedure on that.
That's fine, those are on our website, yeah.
That'd be great, because that's money that shouldn't be paid for reimbursement for stealing. I mean, I would just think that even in fundraising, people who are donating or raising that money, if you are told, hey, this is going to be going to pay for people who steal things, that's raising money under false pretenses.
And so generally speaking, just so you know, an account like an activity fund would be something that they would be able to tap into immediately to be able to support families and students that are really upset and have lost property. And then, when the insurance claim comes in, the money can go back into that account. Right? We couldn't, for instance, take the money out of facilities or instruction or supplies. So accounts ends up being one of those things that are a little bit more flush. And those are also in line with our policies about how and where money goes in and goes out. But I can certainly direct you to those as well, absolutely.
And then the last question on this, or statement, is what is the bag check policy of searching somebody? You must have it if somebody comes in and there's a threat for harm. You must have some kind of policy where the school is allowed to check bags. Is that not correct?
Yeah, schools have the right under search and seizure, but only for some things. So again, I can't really get into the specifics of what happened to a certain student.
I'm not asking that.
Yes, so does the school have the right to do it in some instances? Yes. In all, no.
So in the instance where somebody steals stuff, and you have video surveillance in school while the person is here, does the school have right to search their bags? That's a pretty easy.
It depends what, it depends. It isn't actually as black and white as you think it might be. And we do have to defer to law enforcement in a lot of the instances. So again, I don't have all of the specifics. I was involved at a certain level. I do know that the insurance company was notified, Mr. Ruppel worked with, Brenda Fleming, they went through all of those procedures. I do also know that law enforcement was involved. Beyond that, I don't really have a ton of specifics, so I'll have to get back to you.
Okay, and the last thing on that is, was this person, don't care the student, you don't have to name a name, was this person, was the school allowed to search their property?
I don't know the answer to that.
We'll get back to you. No, that's the best I could tell you at this point.
And I think it's like a law, right? You have to have reasonable suspicion.
They had video surveillance of her doing it.
Well, that would be after the fact, right?
Well, that was, she was being detained while this was all happening, same time. Yeah, you obviously don't know much about what happened.
I don't know the, no.
We don't know any, I'm telling you, I'm being honest with you.
That's why I'm here, because that's why we should be bringing these things to the board.
No, see, no, see, like I told you, we are a quasi-judicial board, so when something happens at a student level, sometimes we can't know about that, because if it rises to the board where the board has to take action, if we know about it, then we can't actually do that part of our job. So.
That sounds like an issue with that. I have every right to come here and tell.
It's a law, and you can.
I have every right to come here and tell you about it, though.
Well, sure, you can tell us about it, but we, again, we're not going to get into specifics, and I'm going to defer it back to the superintendent, just so you know. And honestly, if you have issues with something, if you didn't get something done through Mr. Ruppel, she's your next step before you come to the board.
No, I can come, that's the whole point of public comment, sorry.
Well, you can come back and, right, but I'm still going to defer you back to the superintendent.
And I'm going to keep coming until something gets done.
That's fine. I just wanted to let you know.
No problem.
Okay? Anyone else? Jen?
Everyone must know I'm going to speak when I walk in a room, so. Jennifer Tinsman, Charlene. So, in part of the supplemental documents for tonight's meeting was the memo that went out regarding code of conduct, and specifically adult code of conduct. So, as that discussion comes up later, I just would defer you back to that. The first statement in that is that you will provide a physically and emotionally safe place for students. As we've brought up before, the conduct of a board member, I believe, does not adhere to that. Your policy also very specifically comments on social media, comments and such. And so, I'm asking the board, as you look at that memo for code of conduct, hopefully we won't have to actually look at those, and maybe you will in executive session. I prefer that they not be looked at again publicly, because I think that it is traumatic for the populations that it offends and that it threatens. So, also know that the Supreme Court has ruled that because you are elected officials, you can censure one of your own, and it does not violate freedom of speech.
Thanks, Jen. Anyone else? Anyone online? Okay. Actually, I'm sorry, I can't read your name, but you have your hand up.
It's Alex Hilliard.
Oh, I'm sorry, Alex. Yes.
Okay. My name is Alex Hilliard. I attended the last school board meeting where I shared my concerns about transphobic comments made by a sitting school board member. I and other stakeholders from the community attended in order to speak on behalf of transgender youth. At the meeting, I asked for the school board to make a change to the supervisory union's code of conduct regarding professional conduct for social media usage. I also asked the board to hold to their agenda item, which was a discussion of school board member conduct. And finally, I asked that the school board member apologize to the greater community. I hope today that the school board will weigh in on the matter, as was outlined on the agenda item for the 417 minute. I hope also to hear an apology from the school board member. But I really want to congratulate and thank the Otter Valley Unified School Board for your efforts in this matter. I, again, was proud to see how folks had rallied last time, and I think the speed with which you work to actually change that code of conduct is really impressive. I'm really grateful, you know, that you took the time to listen to me and other opinion members, and I hope that we'll keep moving forward in a positive way.
Thanks, Alex. Anyone else? Barry?
Just because I wasn't going to talk about this tonight, but seeing as how everybody else is, I did not read it on the agenda. I also wanted to weigh in on this as part of a larger group that was here raising our concerns and standing up for free speech and the First Amendment and 13 amendments that establish the Bill of Rights. Just going to leave it as what people do on their private time and in their own personal life has no effect on what they serve as a social or in an administrative capacity. Should some stuff happen at a school board meeting when they're in that function, I would say that that is a legitimate concern. But to ask somebody to change how they feel outside of that capacity is unconstitutional, and I support everybody's right to say what they think on their social media, where it is. And I don't agree myself with a lot of it, a lot of people, but it's your right, and I respect that, you have that right. So I just want to say that for a large majority that was here, I think that the First Amendment and the 13 amendments that constitute the Bill of Rights is a great thing, and everybody should have the freedom to do as they please in their own personal capacity.
Okay. Anyone else? All right. Just so you know, we did not receive any Let's Talk communication since our last board meeting, so we will move on to consent agenda. I'm hearing that you want to change the minutes and pull those off, so we will do that. Anything else before we move on?
Both minutes.
Just the April 11th.
Just the April 11th.
I'd like to pull off Deb Alexander, too.
You mean the personnel?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. So we're pulling off the April 11th, April 11th?
I think that was the date. I'm not staring at it, but I'm pretty sure.
Okay, April 11th, okay.
Or in the 11th.
So, let's do B and C together first, and then we'll go back, because I think minutes we need to be together, even though there's two sets. So, can I get someone to make a motion for the consent agenda for items B and C, which is orders and monthly financials?
I move that we.
Thanks, Fernanda. Is there a second? Thank you, Natalie. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, passes. We'll go with minutes, so if someone can make a motion in a second?
I move to accept the minutes.
Okay. That was Kevin.
Or should I move to?
And then Eric seconded.
It might be easier, I'm going to change that if I may, to amend the minutes, as Greg suggested.
Okay. So essentially, to make sure that he was here on April 11th.
All this time, just to put my name in.
That's all right, no worries. Well, it's important. Okay. And who seconded that?
For which day? Eric. April 11th. I seconded.
Okay. April 11th. All right. So we're adding Greg's name to show that he was here on April 11th. Any other discussion regarding the minutes?
I know there was a lot of people here, so obviously.
So you're for Kevin, Charlie.
But it's like I didn't exist, I wasn't even absent. I just was nothing, so I just want to exist and be present.
Or not.
Or not.
Or not.
All right. So, any other changes to the minutes or discussion regarding minutes? Okay, hearing none. All of those that approve the minutes with the change on April 11th to include Greg Bernhardt as being present, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right. Personnel changes. So since you'd like to pull it off, you want to make the motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to accept the personnel changes.
Okay. Is there a second? Thank you, Kevin. Kevin is the second. Discussion.
Yeah, I just wanted to take a moment for all of Pittsburgh residents to thank Deb Alexander for her years of support and service to Lothrop School, and we are very sad to see her go.
Okay. Well, she's still with us.
She's not going.
She's not going anywhere, but she, it will be a different capacity, yes, you're right. So, any other changes?
I have a question about.
Sure.
Kristin Lucas is listed here as the grade 5, 6 teacher. I thought she was the grade 4 teacher. Is that?
Yes.
She's grade 4.
All right, so we'll make that change as well. Kristin Lucas?
Thank you.
Yeah. Anything else? Okay, so all that, do you mind amending your motion to say that Kristin Lucas is grade 4, not grade 5 and 6?
Can I ask a question? Is that what she's going to be next year?
Yes, she is a current Lothrop teacher reassigned to OCA as 4th grade, not 5, 6.
Got it.
Yeah, I'll amend my motion to.
Include Kristin Lucas? As a 4th grade teacher.
Yeah, yeah.
There you go, I agree with that.
Perfect, and you agree with that, Kevin? Thank you. All of those that approve the personnel changes with that one change, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, thank you. All right, we are moving on to our monitoring report, 2.6, asset protection provided by Kristin. It is on page, I think I went to page 23. Maybe it was 39. I think I saw it in your packet. Look at that. All right, so, would love to hear someone make a motion to accept her report, and then we can discuss.
I move to accept the report.
Second.
Okay, so Kristin and Derek, discussion. And Derek.
Call them Kristin.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
It was on my head. Sorry, in the brain.
I don't know who that was insulting to.
Tell me the page again.
Someone should be offended.
Well, it might not have been that Kristin.
I feel okay with it.
I don't think it was you either, I think it was because we were talking about Kristin Lucas. Page 23. I did notice that you were in compliance with protecting all of our assets, so thank you for that. So I'm not hearing anything. I'm assuming that you've all looked at this prior to the meeting, read it forwards, backwards, and sideways. Yep, exactly. All right, so hearing nothing, all of those in favor of accepting 2.6 asset protection as provided by Kristin, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. Now it's time for our board monitoring reports. We've got two tonight because they're short. They start on page 30, maybe?
32.
Well, there's a worksheet.
So the first one is 4.2, which is the board job description, which is all of you guys. This time, we provided the correct worksheet that was what we had included from last year, so, which helps, I think, us look at what it was, and then if you guys have any changes to that, we can make changes to it. So. What's your pleasure? Anything that you liked, disliked, didn't, we're not doing anymore, are doing, that's not on here? The one I first noticed was the hiring process for Jean's replacement, because her replacement's already here.
Mm-hmm. It's a little out of date.
It is.
There's a few things that need to be updated.
So what needs to be updated? Yeah, we already have someone who's good, thank you, Kristin, for that. So I'm changing the one about the hiring process for Kristin, that she was hired as of 7/1/23 through 22. What else was outdated? Barbara?
I don't know. I'm remembering things about the committee part as well, which is different.
Purchasing buses recently?
Yeah.
Negotiating with the bus driver.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Seven plus.
Where was that?
Number seven plus.
Seven plus?
Before that, you could look at 2C.
And also number six.
Okay, so seven plus.
It was just the evidence piece.
Okay, so, right, so we've actually already negotiated with pairs and bus drivers, and so we can say we've had a successful negotiation with them, too.
And, I don't know, number six, we had used a portion of surplus to give back, but I don't know if we, if that's used up, or if we have one more year of that.
And your surplus funds? Yeah, so that's something that we'll be talking about next month, so that's something that we always do in June, if there are surplus funds.
Right.
Whether we give any of that back.
Right.
Or not. So. But we did give back, that's still correct as of this, as of today.
It's, yep, it's just based on what we had done.
So we can say we used a portion of the surplus in 2021 slash 2022 to give back to the taxpayers. Because we did do that.
Did you already say the part in 2B where it mentions, says the monitoring report Jean gives us?
Nope, we can change that, too. We probably should just change Jean to superintendent. Are you okay with that?
I'm fine with that.
All right. So I will make that change. So anytime it says Jean or Kristin, we'll just change that to superintendent. Anything else? And the purchasing buses recently, we do it every year, so we're actually in the process of doing that again. I did hear someone say that. Okay, hearing nothing else, if you're okay with that, I will have them update this at central office. And then the other monitoring report we have is 4.6, board committee principles. So, let's see, we still have the Hawk Hill Committee, we still have negotiations, although currently they are not in force, because we have three-year contracts with both our pairs and bus drivers and our teachers, so we will not be using those for at least two years. And we have not used the task force for a while. Anything there that needs to be updated?
I love the interpretation.
Of which one?
One.
Okay, what don't you like about it?
I think that it is deflative. I think it makes it so that we can just always come back on the superintendent every time something goes wrong. I just fundamentally don't agree with that. I feel like we're not doing our job, we should be more assistive.
Assistive with what?
Anything that comes up. I mean, I guess my, the thing that's on my mind right now is thinking about safety, right? I mean, we have all these meetings, the only time people ever come in is when they're concerned about their kid's safety. I don't, I mean, is it really our place to step in there and do something? Maybe, maybe not, but I just don't agree with the interpretation that we should not be looking to use committees as a way to solve our problems.
So actually, the reason that we haven't used committees is it's long, old history, but when we first became, and anybody jump in that's from when we first joined back in 2016 or whenever it was, we did have committees. We had three, actually. We had one that did policy, we had one that did budgeting, or a finance committee, and then we had one that was.
Curriculum.
Curriculum.
All of it.
That's right. And you know what we did? We had extra board meetings every month so that those committees would meet, and then they would come back to the regular board, and then the whole board would rip everything that each committee had done fully apart, and we would rehash the whole thing again. So that is why we haven't had committees since that first year. Yeah.
It's, the board's job is not to do operational work, either.
True, too.
Yeah, that was before policy governance, that we had those operate, we had sort of operational.
But again, it was not effective at all.
But our job is to make sure that the district is adhering to our policies, and there isn't a lot of latitude in our meetings to actually accomplish some of those tasks, right? I mean, we're constantly caught off guard with things that happen that we aren't really made aware of until the meeting, and it just seems like committees might be a way to help bridge that gap.
Well, certain things that you're aware of tonight, like Mr. Whitney's, we would not be aware of that, because it is not something that we can be aware of until it were to, if it were to become something that the board has to deal with, because otherwise we cannot be in our quasi-judicial hats. So there are certain things that we are not going to be made aware of until we need to be made aware of them, and that is why we have a superintendent. So we hire her to make sure, and we look to her to make sure all of our policies are being adhered to, that's why we look at her monitoring reports for all of those executive limitations. But if you do have questions in the meantime, when things come up like the Nessabee incident and the Otter Valley incident, those are when we can turn to, you know, that's when we ask her, you know, and usually she'll tell you that, yes, something fell down or something happened, and they're reviewing policies and they're making changes. So there does have to be a level of trust there, too.
Understood. I just don't agree with that interpretation, that's all.
Well, and that's fine, but, you know, that I just want to be, you know, transparent and explain why we do the, or why we've done the things we've done, now that we have to continue to do them that way. But policy governance is such that we do leave all of those operational things to the superintendent until she says, I need help. And if she came to us and said she needed help, then I'm sure we would jump in both feet. And since you don't necessarily like that interpretation, what would you want to say?
Ow, you're putting me on the spot.
Well, or anyone. I mean, if you're, if there's other people here who also do not agree with that interpretation, if you're the only one, then, okay, fine, we'll keep it the way it is. But if there are six other people here that don't agree with your interpretation, we can make changes.
I just don't like the language of it. I feel like it, it's sort of like, we don't want to do it, don't bother us with it.
Yeah, we don't want to be dismissive, but.
I would like to see something a little bit more.
Proactive, so like, committees shall only be formed in cases where superintendent made by the board? I don't know.[1753.04]
Yeah, I don't know, something like that, something less.
I'm more concerned with the committees that, that Jean would form outside the board on a regular basis for hiring. Or, um, the, um, the equity report where she would bypass us.
Um, well, wait a minute. So those committees aren't necessarily board committees. Those are part of operations, which are, are part of the superintendent's purview. And therefore, we would not have any say in that, because we give her latitude to hire, to make those committees, to hire the people that she feels.
So if she wanted to hire a budget committee and create, uh, do budget approvals that way, would she? You know, we'd have to.
No.
By statute, we have to, we have to vote on it, but if they came to us and said, "This is prepared, this is done, yea or nay," would that be a justifiable use of the superintendent's power?
Well, if you think about it, the budget is put together by Brenda Fleming and all of the principals, so, which is who we would want to put together the budget, because they know what we need in all of the schools, and what our students need, correct?
We leave it up to the superintendent and the staff to bring us information. However they get that information is up to them, and we make decisions based on the information provided to us.
The only real difference, like, because I was on that committee way back in the day.
I've had the hand up for three speakers now, so.
Go ahead.
The committees that we have, and this may be repeating what people just said, are the ones that allow us to do our work and not overlap with what the superintendent is supposed to do. So for example, negotiations are things that fall into the purview of actually, well, aren't issue. Um, the task force was looking forward toward planning for the district. And then Hawk Hill is the, is the property managed by the.
Management plan.
Yeah. So those are not operational, those are more, um, you know, managing non-supernintendent tasks. And so those exist because of that. The committees you mentioned previously were overlapping things that were being done by people we hired to do them, like the curriculum, director of curriculum and instruction, the superintendent, the finance manager, and it was just very redundant, it was.
Well, we also brought it back to the board and then tore it apart. Any decisions that the committee made, nobody agreed with.
Right, and it made it, it made it redundant and a waste of a lot of people's time.
Exactly. Right, so and that's, but that, and that's, so that's one reason why we don't have those types of committees. So I'm fine with changing the reasonable interpretation, and everybody else chime in. Committees shall be formed only when necessary to promote board needs, because that's in there.
How about, um, non-operational committees may be formed to advance the board's needs, or the board's work?
Okay. Non-operational committees shall be formed, what was, I'm sorry.
I said, may be formed.
May be formed.
As needed, to advance the board's work.
To advance the board work, to advance the board's work. Okay? And so we're going to get rid of committees shall not be formed to deal with operational. Well, I think that still needs to be there, but, um.
Well, it says non-operational committees, right?
Yeah, so non-operational committees may be formed to advance the work of the board. Committees shall not be formed to deal with operational tasks of the superintendent. And that, that, is everybody okay with that? Yes, no?
Yeah, seems good.
Yes, okay.
Thinking, is it, is it clear? I mean, I guess the question is, is it clear? Do we know what that means? If we don't know what it means, I mean.
Right, well, board, I mean, we know what board work is, but do we want to be more detailed about what board's work is? I mean, I.
I don't know. I mean, we do come back around to sometimes the, the realization or the observation that we are not being clear enough in interpretations, and then we run into whatever, we run into problems. So if we're here crafting a clear, reasonable interpretation, I guess that the question is to the board, is this, is this rewording clearer to people?
Do we have a policy that lists what our work is? So can we refer to the work as outlined in policy, whatever?
We do.
We must have it somewhere, I'm not exactly sure where.
I mean, is it in our?
Descriptions of responsibilities of the board.
Oh, that's true, it is in our.
Under governance.
Yeah. It is there. I mean, mainly the, what our board work is, is to keep the ship going in the direction and make sure that our kids are getting the education they need in order to be able to function in the world of, once they graduate from here. Whatever that function is, whether it's college, or whether it's, but, you know.
There's.
Yes.
There's the previous box in that, uh, under this discussion that has explanatory notes, which, I'm not sure if it's exactly policy wording or not, but it, but it does explain the policy under number one. You know, in keeping with the board's broader focus, which refers to our responsibilities under policy governance and how we do our work, the board committees will normally not have direct dealings with current staff operations. At all. It boxes back and forth in several policies that they add descriptions of our, of who we are and what our work is.
Right, I think that's probably one of the reasons why we have facilities discussions constantly, because that is not operational, that is more, you know, we need to make sure that our facilities are well-maintained in order to do all the operations within. So we talk about facilities a lot, based on the information that we get from Rich and Brenda. And that's one of the reasons why the task form, task force was formed, was so that we knew what we had for facilities and how we could use them, how they would best help us going forward.
Our.
Yep, go ahead.
In the, in our policies, and you may have just said this, under governance process, that does a, um, more detailed job of describing the work of the board. Our major policy focus is on the intended long-term impacts outside the staff organization and not on the administrative or programmatic means of attending those events. So it, you know, it gets back to what we're responsible for in our lane. And there's a more, you know, it's fleshed out.
So do you want to, do you want to refer back to that paragraph? I mean, we can. Refer back to policy.
4.0, I mean, 4.0 and beyond, or governance process, that whole, in.
All right.
There's a lot throughout that explains, you know, what, what we are supposed to do.
Okay. Back to 4.0 and governance process, okay.
Is there a way for someone to recommend, or at least start the conversation, for is this a time or a place where we would want a committee? Like, how does that happen?
Yeah, so that can happen at any time, I suppose. If there, if something were to come up that we need to talk about, um, going forward, then we could talk about a committee at that time, if it made sense.
I just mean, did you want that?
Oh, sure. Yep. Okay. Anything else? Okay, hearing none, we'll make that one change, and we'll make that happen. Thank you. All right, uh, we are now under governance process. Uh, the first thing we have is an Ovu policy for action, which is our second reading and to adopt, which is policy JEF, elementary intra-district choice transfers. It's been revised and renamed, and there is a request form, it was in your packet as well. It's probably page 34 or 5? Or starts there, anyway?
38.
38. All right, well, I tried. Anyway, 38 is the request form, all right. So 37 has your policy there. So this is the second reading. We always have to have two readings of a policy. The first time we read this was back on 315. Does someone want to make a motion to approve? And then we can discuss.
I'll move to approve.
Derek and Natalie? Thank you. Discussion?
There's a line that says, it's the 1, 2, 3, 4th paragraph, it says, "The Director of Curriculum." Is there no longer a Director of Curriculum?
There is, it would need to be revised next year.
Oh, because, yeah, the Assistant Superintendent, the new one, doesn't take effect until July 1, so.
Should we alter the policy, then?
You mean, should you?
Now, rather, change the wording now, rather than have to do this again next year, or?
When will this go into effect?
Now.
You want it to go into effect for this year, so it needs to stay the same?
We could put both of them in there.
You could put both.
The, the window for choice, right? Hasn't that already passed, so?
It's open because of this.
Yeah.
So now we have received requests and are just sort of sitting on them, waiting for the board to decide. So yes, yes.
If we approve this now, it's not really going to matter for next year, anyway.
It will, we haven't done anything with those requests. They all know it's, they're, it's, they're kind of in a holding pattern. We've taken them all in.
Greg?
And so how will you act differently when this goes into effect with those requests, as opposed to the previous policy?
So, for instance, and it's in my superintendent's report, our actual choice reports for this year are much less than last year. As of today's date, we have five new applicant, applications using the old policy for school choice. All five applications are for kindergarten, which is what continues to be sort of the bane of our existence. All requesting Nashabie. Nashabie's kindergartens are 18 and 19 right now. Of the five requests, four of the five are coming from OCA, Lester, asking to leave, and all of them are because those kids are in the pre-K program at Nashabie, right? That just, that sort of is this historical thing. So how we would act differently is, first of all, it allows us more flexibility during the school year to have an intra-district choice transfer. I'll give you an example. I have a mom who reached out to me last week about some things that were happening for her student in one of our elementary schools. She asked for a transfer to another elementary school. Without this policy, she needs to wait until next year. If we allowed intra-district transfers, I could have a conversation with her, understand the need, look at the other school, and be able to make a decision based on how we could best support that kid and that family. The flip side of it is it also allows us to go back to, for instance, those five kindergarten families and say, "Okay, of those five, we know that two of the five requests have two current older siblings enrolled at Nashabie." That's a no-brainer. You would never make a family separate, like a third grader and a kindergartner. But of the other three, they're the first or, they're the first oldest sibling or only child in the family. Why are you requesting Nashabie? So we would push back and say, take a tour of OCA, meet with the principal, see the facilities, and go through that form and say, really, what is your reason for the request? Around, like, regionally around the state, kids go to preschool all the time, right? Like, so I might live in Rutland, but work here, so I send my kids to Nashabie that preschool, because it's easier for me. But when my student goes to kindergarten, well, they have to go back to Rutland. That sort of thing happens to families all the time. So the argument that, oh, they're used to pre-K in this building, isn't really enough to support the choice request because it's harming both Nashabie on one side and OCA on the other side. So it just allows us a little bit more flexibility to understand why people are making their requests and have them be, you know, pretty thoughtful about the what and the why behind it. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, I like some of the things you're saying there. It just makes me nervous still, just based on the start of this whole organization. This is sort of one of the founding principles, and we're changing it. And before, if I remember correctly, it was mostly based on capacity. So obviously, that's still in line. I mean, if there's no room at Nashabie, there's just no room, despite whatever the reason is. Except I like the idea that you can have these open, you know.
Except as policies sit, as the current policy sits, just know that we tell kids that they're in or they're out June 1st.
Yeah.
We all know kids move in, or people see the yellow bus in August, and they're like, oh, whoops. Quick, go. And then we could never have a Nashabie, someone who resides in Brandon, we could never say, "We're full here, go to OCA." That's not fair.
Yeah, I, I just, like I said, the founding principle of that we all own all the schools and have access to them is what makes me nervous, that, that there's no, if there's no reason beyond, like you were saying, then you're going to push back. It's just how, at some later date, let's say we decide to have a bond for, you know, $5 million to work on Nashabie, how are these other towns going to feel like they want to vote for saying yes, if they have no access to the school, except under these circumstances of some sort of?
Except when you look at the actual policy, when you look at the why we might consider it, they're pretty much all of the reasons you would ask, right?
Yeah, no, I understand, but some people, if they just like Nashabie better after touring OCA and Nashabie, would they be allowed to attend?
Then we would say, like, if you, if you had a reason why you preferred Nashabie's educational environment, for instance.
I just want to make sure that there's.
Yes.
That there's still.
And again, it would allow us to be able to say, "We can't necessarily tell you by June 1st," right? That Nashabie's kindergartens, well, I see Mrs. Dyer on the screen right now, their kindergartens are 19.
Yeah.
And we have one, you know, that has.
Of course, capacity still matters, either policy, any policy, it's going to matter, so.
And I, and I do think the, the, beyond how it unintentionally harms both Nashabie and OCA as the policy sits, and again, I'm just saying, revise the policy, don't let go of the policy. It is important to be able to have choice. Is when you all merged, you had Otter Creek Academy with three specific schools who had specific awesome traits, right? Like, here's when Sudbury was an outdoor program, that's not a thing anymore. So all of our elementary programs are, we're really saying, we believe in all of them. They, they all have inherent value, and our kids have an equitable experience in each. So we're just saying, trying to give us a little bit of a buffer to be able to both support OCA and Nashabie. Lothrup ends up not being impacted at all, virtually.
Yeah. I just don't want to see choice go away.
It's not, yeah. I agree with you, Greg.
Mrs. Dyer, she's been waiting.
Is it okay for me to talk at this point?
I'll let you talk.
I just, yeah, I just wanted to, I'm just, you know, I'm a teacher at Nashabie, so, but I'm retiring, but I just wanted to use the numbers from the town report. And what happens is, so, it's projected that Nashabie will have 18 kid murders in each class next year. We always get about eight to 10 that come in during the summer. And then if you were to take four away from the projection of Lester of having 12, that leaves them with eight. So I, I mean, I think kind of maybe need to think about it in that way. You still want to have choice, but it really does build up Nashabie. So if you took two of each of those, that would put 2020 and 19, and then, like, I always get, I have three this year that moved in, you know, that puts you very high, and then it takes so much away from Lester. And I'm just using, you know, I'm not saying my opinion or anything, I'm just using the data that I took from the town report. So it's just something to think about.
Thanks, Mrs. Dyer. Natalie?
You're wel, you're welcome.
I was just wondering if there were any changes from the last version we saw?
No.
Okay, any other discussion regarding this policy?
I'll bring it up again, should we add Director of Curriculum or Assistant Superintendent? That way we don't have to.
Come back.
Come back to this, and it's been.
You, we could say the Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Office, because the Assistant Superintendent is the Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment.
Do you like that?
Yeah, that's great.
That's flexible. All right, so whoever made the motion needs to approve a friendly amendment to add that.
Yeah, definitely.
Are you okay with that?
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
All right. Assessment Office, okay. All right, any other discussion? Okay, all of those in favor?
I do have one question. Kristin, to Greg's point, where I was looking at the reasons for request, is there any kind of, like, weighted rubric that's used to determine this? Or is it just at the determination of the curriculum director right now?
Well, the, all the curriculum director, it's actually me. All the curriculum director is, being involved in is taking a look at the buildings, right? Like, so if someone is requesting to go to Nashabie right now from, say, OCA, they would go to Vicky Wells and say, "Tell me what your kindergarten classrooms look like," right? So that's their level of involvement. At this point, no, do we not, do we have a rubric? No, we have five students. We know that two of them, we're going to let in because they have two siblings. We have no idea what the other three people's requests are.
And is that written somewhere that, I feel like I remember it? Something stating that if you have siblings, you're given preferential? So if I, let's say I have a kid, and I say, oh, well, the other two kids got in, but mine didn't. What's the reason? What's the reason? I think you'd want to know it wasn't arbitrary.
Right.
And it's, I mean, that's a good reason. I'm not disagreeing with the reason. I'm just not sure that it's stated anywhere.
Right. I mean, the, the reason that we would deny, like, if you go to the final page, the reason that we would deny would be, I, we still might have to deny, for instance, a sibling. If our Nashaby classrooms were twenty-five and OCA was two. So denied for a lack of space available or denied for another reason. So I would have to say what that reason was. And then annually, as we present the choice report to you all, we will have to tell you how many kids requested transfers, how many were allowed to transfer, and what the reasons were that they weren't. I mean, we want to be really transparent. And again, back to Greg's point, I'm not trying to hurt any family or, and this mom this week was a perfect example of someone who I would have loved to have said, you don't have to wait until next August. I have intra-district transfer, let's let you go. So most people who are making the request are making it for a valid reason, but a lot of them are just, oh, I'm at Nashaby pre-K. Like, how fun. Let's just stay at Nashaby. So I'm saying, let's give OCA a chance.
This, would this affect the preschools at all?
No, no. And we are in the process of, well, as you know, we're in the process of really revising pre-K to be much more significant for FY '25 anyways.
Because it is hard to ask a four-year-old to switch schools.
Although, like, at Cavali, those kids aren't at Lothrup. All the kids who go from Whiting go to OCA anyways.
So I.
But kids do it everywhere.
Right.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Okay, all of those in favor of the OVUU policy JEF Elementary intra-district choice transfers as amended to include office for the Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed?
Aye.
All right, next one. OVUU policy for action. This is our first reading, which is the general vision, general revisions to change all of the he, she's to theirs in our policies. So that starts at the page forty. So these are all of our policies completely, and what Melinda did along with Pam is they went through and they changed all the words that said he, she. Right, him, her. Anything that, to make it non-gender specific.
You need a motion?
Yep.
I move that we accept the change of they to the policies.
Okay, and seconded by Fernanda. Discussion?
Shouldn't we be using they for he, he, she as opposed to their?
Does it all say, I didn't?
No, some say them.
I, let's see here. I think they, at the top it says, change him, her to their.
Not all that, though. I mean, some of them are they, them, their.
I got to find an example. They did change he slash she to they. That change actually.
Okay.
So is the change their or they?
Basically to change gender-specific pronouns to non-gender specific, the non-gender specific they, them, their.
So essentially what she's saying is that the he, she got changed to they, but everything else got changed to what, you know, them or their, depending on what the wording is.
Did have a question on, well, page twenty of the document or on page fifty-nine.
Okay.
There's an or according to law that's highlighted.
Oh, yes, that was, that was because during our discussion back in, and I'd have to review the minutes, but there was a discussion, and I believe it was Natalie who brought it up, that said, and maybe even you had something to do with it too, was that we wanted that to say.
Confidentiality. It's related to confidentiality.
Right, related to confidentiality and according to law. So that is where.
Perpah or hipah.
Perfect. That's where that came from. Yes, I'm sorry, I forgot about that one, one other change. Because we had requested that. When we were reviewing, I think we were reviewing one of our policies at the time, and so we incorporated it into this. But this would be a first reading. So we will look at this one more time.
So I, I know that, you know, they and their really have been common usage for, speaking of individuals, for, I don't know, twenty, twenty-five years. But is there, I haven't looked at this closely enough, is there any place where the ambiguity between an individual and multiple persons is going to be an issue?
Here's a sentence. Here's an example. I can give you, I might read one. Because the superintendent works for the full board, they will not be required to obtain the approval. So, I mean, it's indicating a singular person in the first and.
I mean, that actually indicates the board.
No.
No, the superintendent.
Read, listen to it.
No, where do I go? Because the superintendent works for the full board, they will not be required to obtain the approval of a board committee before an executive action.
That's talking about superintendent. Any other examples?
Let me see here.
I think you can read that change that they indicates the board, though.
No.
No, it's the superintendent, but why can't it just say the superintendent again?
Yeah.
Like, there are some instances you don't need to use a pronoun. You can just say, the superintendent will not be.
Well, if you want to make that change, we can make that.
I mean, just for his, you know, the sake of clarity, since Kevin's confused, does that refer to the full board? Because that is a plural in the previous clause. Whereas, I mean, I.
If you take away the comma, then there's.
Grammar, though, you know that, that they is referring to superintendent.
No, I know. I just, it's just to avoid that, but absolutely.
The chair, here's another example.
Okay, yep, go for it.
The chair may represent the board to outside parties in announcing board-stated positions and in stating chair decisions and interpretations with the area delegated to them and report such activity at the next meeting of the board.
That's talking about the chair.
Yep.
But not to the full board.
Right.
Okay.
Weren't a lot, actually.
I would suggest that using the noun rather than the pronoun would clear up a lot of.
I'd agree with you. Yep.
So the, do we want to take the time right now to go through this? Or unless someone has already gone through it and knows which ones they want to change? Because otherwise, we have to go through this, well, we can go through it now. I don't have a problem with that. But otherwise, someone is going to make these changes, and then you're going to have to look at them and make sure that's where you want them to be.
I mean, like, sorry to interrupt, but there is one instance where there is necessary. Allow barriers to exist that prevent any student achieving. You can't say the student, you would say there. So like, there are some instances that we're going to have to change to there. But when, you can just say the superintendent, I think, might as well.
Okay, but, right, so do we want to go through this and make this?
There are not many. I think we could go through them pretty quickly.
Okay.
It may be just those three.
Just those three?
Maybe. I'm double checking.
Only on these.
The one you mentioned.
Barbara will get this done fast.
I, I mean, it is, it's for all policies.
It is a lot.
This would be a great committee activity.
It is true.
I'm serious. You're so funny.
It's our work.
That's true, it is.
So like, for example, this is four point, huh, four point four, the chair's role number two C. The thing I read earlier. The chair may represent the board to outside parties in announcing board-stated positions and in stating chair decisions and interpretations within the area delegated to the chair and report such activity at the next meeting of the board. That would be that.
Okay, but that's only, but that doesn't go back all the way to one point zero and goes all the way through.
So this is our first reading, correct?
No, that is, I'm, yes.
That's the first one you found?
Well, the first one in the document is the one that Greg mentioned about student.
All right.
In retaining the there.
Okay.
Changing to there.
To change, to change it to there, yes.
Okay.
Can I make a suggestion? This is only our first reading, right? Because we're going to have a second. It says here that we approved them on six-six. It says.
We will approve the next one on six-six, yes.
First reading approve five-two, second reading adopt six-six.
Yeah, that's correct.
So couldn't we suggest that somebody make those revisions and then bring it back, and then that's when we approve? Or do we need to do this?
That would be the first reading again.
I mean, there's.
Oh, because then it would be first reading again.
Not necessarily. You can, no, not necessarily, because we are looking at it here. And then you could always come back to the second meeting and someone say, I want to make this change, this change, this change, and it's still the second reading because you haven't actually changed the, you know, what it's saying. You're just making it more clear.
I stand corrected.
Well, that's.
Well, like, we changed that one to the Office of Curriculum, and it still goes through.
Well, right, so I think.
There's three changes. There's the there.
Right, which is already in there.
It's already in here.
Okay.
And then there's the chair and the superintendent.
So why don't we make the two changes that you're talking about, and please be specific so that Charlene knows exactly where the changes are.
All right.
And then, but it's very important that before our next meeting, or in June, when we meet about this again, that everybody's gone through it and made sure that we haven't missed one.
Okay.
Okay?
So you want me to?
Yep.
Do what? Make a motion?
I want you to make.
Or just shoot, shoot the policy number out into the air so she gets in the minutes?
Are we getting rid of the last motion then?
Well, that's what we're trying to figure out right now. So, um, I think what we can say is.
Did I make the motion initially?
You made a motion and Fernanda seconded it.
Okay, so I could change my motion to be, well.
You can rescind that one and make a completely new motion if that's what you want to do.
Well, why don't I rescind it and then make a motion?
As long as Fernanda's okay with it.
I second my rescind.
So what's your new motion?
So my new motion is to change the policies in the following ways that we.
So you want to adopt the policies with the following changes?
Adopt the policy with the following changes, okay.
And what?
We're approving.
So she's about to tell us what general, where she wants to make the changes to the he or she.
In?
But you're not adopting them.
We're approving.
No, I'm just suggesting them.
It's a first reading.
Right, so she's not adopting.
No, right.
Yeah.
These nineteen, I move that we, with the following changes.
She's just making a motion to make some changes. What are your changes?
Well, the first one is, uh, policy two point one subsection, oh, two point one point nine.
Okay.
Change his slash her to their, which was one of the ones we.
Well, if it's already on there, then you don't need to make that change.
Okay.
Because.
But aren't I moving that we accept, we adopt the?
We're not adopting.
Or I'm moving that we change. And that's one of the things that we were having to move to change, change him, her to their. And in this case, we are having to change him, her to their.
True, but I would say that since that change is already on there to make it, that the only ones you will want to change are the ones that are there.
But my initial motion was about changing that too, right? It was about changing all three.
I hear what Barbara's saying, but I, maybe you should just say, adopt the changes here. Accept, I'm going to make some changes to those changes.
That's kind of what I'm.
Charlene, however you want to interpret.
Can I suggest? I, I think you need to say, approve with the following changes. And I think the changes that we want, approve as is with the following changes that we are making.
Right, with the two changes that you want to change.
Yes.
Sorry.
I'm getting down to the.
So you have to change to.
So you don't have to change that.
Right.
Okay, here's, here's the next one. Four point, four point two C. In that, in four point, four point two C, where it says delegated to him or her, and then it was going to change to them, it should say delegated to the chair.
So in your document, what are you reading? What is it reading? Is it already saying him, her, or are you reading in that document their?
I am reading, within the area delegated to, him or her, which is crossed out, and then.
That's in the document. Him, her is in the document.
And then them.
They want to replace it with their, their chair.
No, she wants to take the change.
I know what she wants.
The change was there, and instead of changing, she wants to change it to the chair. So from there to the chair.
Does that even have a visual?
I'll show her.
Yeah, someone, I mean, I have it there.
I'm trying.
It's right here. It says him or their.
Yeah, I realize, I realize that, but you're.
So what she's changing is.
Approving as is, when she says as is.
As is the changes.
It's already in there. You understand what I'm saying?
Yes.
As is, them is already in there. So as is, she's, she's just changing them to the chair.
Yes.
Not is her. You don't have to say is her. The recommended change.
It's just that we have several rolling changes happening.
Go from the recommended change to the change. Changing them to the chair.
Them to the chair, okay. I'll know what to do in the next instance. Again, the next one is four point five point four. A board member will do nothing intended to give the false impression that, the board member?
No, probably they, right?
They, all right, they, okay. Then actually, I think I've just found another one. Sorry about that.
Nothing changes there. Just ignore that.
Nothing changes today, okay.
Got out of that one.
Here we go. Is this the one? Yeah, this is the one with the superintendent, okay. And then this is four point six point three. Because the superintendent works for the full board, comma, the superintendent will not be required.
Instead of they, it'll be the superintendent. Okay.
And that's it.
Page eleven, we, we added some D's. So the safety language. Not sure that those are necessary. I don't have an opinion on it, but just pointing out that there's some.
I'm sorry.
Eleven, it's two point one, um, safety.
Yeah, so we changed it from schools contribute to improve, to improved in attendance. Yeah, and then increased, instead of increased student achievement.
It's funny, those changes are another one I've got.
They're not, they're, it's not in red. I don't see anything.
It is in red in the printout.
Oh, in the print? Okay.
For two point one point zero, oh, safety, it's the first paragraph. It's the.
There's no D in it.
Oh, no.
I'm online looking at it.
Yeah, the online version.
And the one that they gave in the packet, there are red D's.
Right.
So what?
Let's close it down.
You want it to be the way it is?
I don't see a need to change it.
Oh, you want.
Well, I just noticed it was there, so I.
Because it's not in the one that's online.
Yeah, online, there's no D's.
Which is weird. Okay.
I have no opinion on it. I'm just pointing out.
So why don't we just leave that alone, and then when we come back next meeting, we'll make sure they're not there?
Although, I mean, actually, the D's should be there.
Oh.
Okay.
All right.
Reads okay either way.
The Board of Education recognizes that effective learning and teaching takes place in a safe, secure, and welcoming environment, and that safe schools contribute to improved attendance, increased student achievement, and community support.
Ah, yes.
Yeah, that's true.
The two D's.
You are right.
Okay.
Well, actually, Brett's right. You do need the two D's. So someone made the changes and yet didn't actually note it. Safe schools contribute to improved attendance is an improve, a verb, and not a synonym. Safe schools contribute to improved attendance.
Well, it's, it's not on yours. If you're looking at that, it's only in the printed version.
Increased student achievement or increased student.
It was in our packet. It was emailed to us.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking at. It's not this version.
It's not on the one that's in there, so that's weird. So, but we'll add that to the.
What is in here that is not?
The two D's. I mean, I don't know if they all want the two D's. I don't think Natalie necessarily did, two point one point oh. Right, I'm reading it as a verb and not an adjective, so.
I don't see an issue with it either way.
I guess I would lean towards the D, but I don't really care.
Okay, I'm making an executive decision. We're leaving the D's out right now, and we'll make sure that it's, when we bring it back next time, we'll put them in, and then you can decide if you really want them or not. Is everybody okay on that?
Sounds good.
All right, so, any other discussion?
Just one more thing. If we, if we want to use them, as Natalie senses as verbs, we can, we, it makes more sense to drop the words contribute to. That safe schools improve attendance, increase.
Yes.
That's true.
Okay, so, but we're leaving the D's in, and we can make.
So you're leaving the D's in now? I thought you were taking them out.
You said to take them out.
Oh, all right, well, then, fine. I was just going to leave it the way it is, yes.
The way it is for us online is we don't see any D's.
Right, that's right. So I think we leave it like that.
So we're just.
So, we're just leaving it the way it is.
Right, and then, well, if we really want to put them back in, we'll talk about it.
Kevin's suggestion's a good one.
Okay, yes, okay.
If you just click on...
The email with our...
It does clarify and take on...
Dropping the words contribute to, if we're gonna keep the verb.
No, this is the email that was sent to us.
Makes the sentence clear.
It's not off the drive.
There's two ways to click.
Otherwise, you're kinda getting, you're gonna get caught in a lot of verbs.
There's two Ds.
Let's split the difference, keep one jump.
No, no. All right. So, everybody back here for a minute. All right, hey. So, so, we lose the, if we keep the Ds out, Kevin's suggestion is a good one, that we remove the two words, which are?
Contribute to.
Contribute to. So, let's get rid of contribute to. We'll leave the Ds out, and we'll move on.
We need a verb before community support.
Okay, well, I under...
I, I agree with the grammar.
Okay.
Attendants, increased student support.
But just because a school is safe doesn't mean it improves attendance.
We're gonna make it increase the student achievement.
And...
So, are we not doing this?
Support of community?
Hello? Talking to me?
I'm sorry. We're missing a verb now.
Okay. All right, we're going back to what I said. Leave the Ds out, leave it in alone. We'll look at it again next meeting.
Hey, listen, man, grammar matters.
Please, no more discussion, I will listen to it. Okay. So, all of those, in fact, of the changes of he, she, they, whatever, to they and wherever, except for the two noted changes that you talked about at Four Four Two C and at Four Six Three, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed?
Four Six Three.
Yep. Okay. Thank you. Phew, all right.
Promote community support.
All right, uh, next one is PG Policy Four Point Five, Board Member's Code of Conduct. I don't really have that here.
But where are we now, under page?
It should be after that. It's the very next page after all of that stuff.
I don't have that.
Which is page I don't...
Night, well, it's, uh, fifty-nine in the packet.
Is it fifty-nine?
Fifty-nine in the packet.
Yeah, okay. For some reason, I didn't print that one, which I should have.
Well, it's part of the thing we just reviewed.
Shouldn't be part of it.
I mean, oh, are there, oh, proposed, are there proposed changes?
There was, right, so Four Point Five should be by itself. Sorry.
I don't think we got that.
The new changes.
That might have been the according to law thing that we added.
Yes, it is.
It is. That's the according to law thing that we were, that was the proposed change. So, we've already approved that. So, we're going to move to the continued discussion regarding Board Member Code of Conduct. So, at this time, I'm going to lay a little groundwork because I didn't do this at the last meeting, um, because it wasn't on our agenda to do this, but I am going to do it now. So, it came to, came to my attention that a new board member had some stuff on their Facebook page that people did, felt were, um, uh, transphobic and, um, not adhering to RNE S U's policy of keeping all students safe. Um, in regard to that, I spoke with our lawyer, um, and I spoke to the individual. Um, in speaking, but what I'll tell you is, is that in speaking with the lawyer, we don't have, um, you know, everyone is, is right to free speech. That's absolutely true. So, what our, what we need to do as a board is make sure that we keep all students safe here. So, and that is what we are going to do. Uh, you know, that is part of my job as chair. It's part of why we're here as board members. However, um, what else did I want to say? Completely went out of my head. Um, so, like I said, I talked to the lawyer. Um, nothing what you, he was elected. He's been elected by the electorate, so the board doesn't have any way to remove that board member. The board member wanted to resign. That person can do that, but we don't have any ability to remove him. Um, the other thing is, is that if the, if we were having a discussion and that, um, type of stuff came up, uh, or discussion came up and it was, uh, not being safe to our students or to our district, then the board could take action to censor that individual. But that has not happened, and I'm hoping that won't ever happen. But it is something that we have the ability to do. Um, so, as elected officials, you know, we are entitled to have our own opinion. We do have to remember, though, that because we are beholden to the electorate, that, you know, some people may not find what we believe to be the same as every, you know, they may not align. Let's put it that way. So, board needs to have a discussion, um, or at least I feel the board needs to have a discussion about this so that you know about it. And because Alex did bring up at the last meeting, he did indicate that there was a motion he would like to us to entertain, I will tell you that because he is not a board member, we do not have to entertain that motion. Um, but if a board member wants to bring that motion up, which I believe is in the minutes, can someone read last meeting's minutes, please, so that I, I had it written down, but I didn't bring it with me. Um, yeah. I'm sorry. If I'm using the wrong pronouns, I absolutely apologize.
And if that's the case, we would...
I need to go, Seth, you're fine, thank you.
Okay, okay. So, thank you, though. Um, I need to be more cognizant of that. So...
You want me to read?
Yeah, if you could...
Okay. Um, and it's on, uh, page seven of the minutes.
Okay, of the April...
Seven of thirteen of the April eleventh minutes.
Eleventh minutes, okay.
Um, he asked the board to make a motion to require school board members adhere to the board's code of conduct while holding an elected office for posts on social media, whether those posts are public or private, and also ask that board member issue an apology for his recent Facebook posts and restate his commitment to serving in an elected office on behalf of students, transgender students included, as gender care is life-saving health care. That was the request.
Okay, so, to the motion point, um, if you want, if someone wants to make that motion and someone seconds that motion, we can discuss that motion. However, if no one wants to bring forward that motion, or no one seconds that motion, then it dies. So, I want everyone to be aware of that. But that was the motion that Alex had suggested. So, um, I guess the first question is, is there a motion? Okay, I'm not hearing one. So, that means that there is no motion on the floor. Um, and so we would move on. But I think the board needs to have a discussion about this. I don't know if anyone wants to throw in their two cents about, you know, we do need to protect all students. I'm just gonna say it. I think, and I think all of us here believe that. All students need to be protected as, you know, in every fashion that we can.
Are we open to discussion?
Yeah, because there is no motion, so if you want to talk, talk.
I would just say that anything that we say individually does not speak for the entire board.
It does not. That's absolutely true.
Those are individual opinions, and those are not the opinions of the full board.
True.
And that's in our code of conduct.
Mm-hmm.
And that our decisions need to be made regardless of any gender, that it's just for a, the student's safety, period.
Not even safety, it's also in regards to their education.
Student success.
Right, exactly.
We're here for student's success. It does not matter what gender they are.
That is correct, or at least from, in my opinion. I'm not taking any, everybody had the chance to do that during public comment, so...
I didn't know how discussion works at the board.
Yeah, so, keeping it in-house tonight, but you're more than welcome to watch.
That I knew.
I'll just say one quick thing.
Yes.
I do not participate in social media, or as I call it, poison, for a reason.
Okay.
There, I mean, there's elements to what was asked of us that I would agree with, but there's elements that I, I don't. So, I, I mean, I'm, I was torn about making them. I don't think you can force an apology. I think that either comes, you know, organically or not, but forcing it doesn't seem like the thing we should be in the business of doing. Um, I think we need to be mindful of upholding our, our, our job and our mission and our goals and our, our ends, um, and to, and to, and to not shy away from a difficult issue, but also to not center an issue that makes, um, students feel like they're in the hot seat, that they're being focused on unnecessarily. And so, you know, it's a, it's a delicate, it's a delicate balance, but I want those students to be feeling safe. I want all feel, students to feel safe. Um, but it was represented at the last meeting that there is a particular population that is at greater risk, um, from a social, emotional standpoint, among other things, that we need to be cognizant of, and I hope that we are. But not in, to the exclusion of other students, just inclusive of that population. So, I, it's, you can't really make a motion about it, but I feel like it just needs to be said.
Okay.
That that's an important part of what we do.
Yes.
So, first off, excuse my voice, I'm petting a little horse. Everybody knows it was me anyway, I'm the issue, so we'll get that right out front. I don't, um, have any issues with any particular person. I don't have any issues against any students. Nothing I posted was directed toward any individual or group. Um, as I stated, I can have my own beliefs. You don't have to agree with mine. I don't have to agree with yours. Doesn't affect what I decide here or what I talk about here. I can make a motion, it can be denied. That's just the way it works. Everybody has their own opinion. Um, as far as an apology goes, I will apologize to the board for any inconvenience, embarrassment, harassment that I may have caused the board to have to go through all this. I apologize for that. Apologizing for my own personal beliefs and opinions, I, I'm not gonna do that because I have my own, I have my own opinions. I am who I am.
Yep. Thank you. Greg?
Um, I, I think, you know, freedom of speech is obviously important. I, the thing I have trouble with is the implication of violence within one of these. This, the first one doesn't have it, but the last one, and I didn't see the post, I'm just reading what was stated, but...
And it says you. The word, the word is you. There's no, if you is all it says. Doesn't say him, doesn't say her, doesn't say they, it says you. It can be anybody.
But, well, so, we're not...
Yeah, I, the idea that, I just don't believe that free speech extends to propagating the idea that violence can be used because of a belief. Um, so, I, I have, you know, I think if this was, uh, somebody who worked in staff and there was somebody who could, you know, fire that person, it would probably be done over something like this. Obviously, this person was elected. We can't do anything, as you said, but, um, I, I just, I had issues with that.
What we can do is make sure that we uphold our code of conduct, which says that we will keep all students safe, and we will do everything we can to make sure that they move on to a successful life after high school, or after whatever they finish. If they only finish sixth grade here, whatever, but that we will do everything we can to keep them safe and to give them every opportunity to get a good education. That is what I want us to be holding to. Um, that is what I would like to see us do as, as a board. And in our code of conduct, you know, if some, you know, I think, um, well, yeah. So, that's what I'm gonna say at this point. Yes.
My sense from the last meeting was that the community members that all showed up want the board to take some kind of actionable step. I feel like we should, um, basically to do, I think, to show the community, we will do what you decide we'll do, Lori. I think we're all on board with it. Um, I think at this point, because of the response, um, it's been a couple meetings in a row now. People have been showing up about this issue. Um, I feel like we have to do something to show the community the board, um, takes this seriously in a way where we will take an action, not just, um...
Do you have a suggestion?
I don't know if it's, uh, the board, the whole board undergoes a, um, what's it called? Uh, like diversity inclusion training or something along those lines?
Actually, that's true. So, um, after all this happened, um, I have talked to Kristin. I'll get to you in just a minute, Brett. Um, I've talked to, um, Kristin about having some additional training. I actually talked to Pietro Lynn, who does this kind of training as well, um, who could come in and give us some training. The issue is, is that, um, we're running out of meetings before the end of this year, but it can definitely be one of the first ones that we do either at our retreat, or we could do it in September, which might actually be the best time to do this. So, um, not that I want to kick the can down the road at all, but, um, we do have some pretty meaty presentations about equity and about how our students are doing. Um, and I think that would all pertain, I think that all is important, and then I also think that what you're saying is important too, and that we make sure that we have that training, um, at the beginning of the next school year. But I'll leave that up to you guys.
Guarding training, not to jump in front of them.
Oh, well, let me talk to Brett first because he did have his hand up. Sorry.
Yeah, my comment is somewhat about training, too. I, I think it's, this is a really tough subject, I think, for all of us to talk about. And I, I certainly think that we need to be cognizant of the stresses that are affecting all of our marginalized students, right? Whether it's LGBTQ or, or whomever. But I also think if, if we're gonna talk about training, and I think we should, we should also talk about having a training where we do talk about what our rights are. I think that's fair, too.
Hmm. Well, and that's what Pietro would talk about because he is a lawyer, so he would talk about our rights and responsibilities and, and, and all of that. So, yes. Um, I don't know who was, what, did you have your hand raised?
I did not.
Okay, so, sorry, now we go.
So, from my experience working at the college, every new employee or new person on the senior leadership group, as part of their onboarding, needs to have harassment, discrimination training, um, DEI training, um, talks about, you know, rights, responsibilities, all that kind of stuff. So, maybe we need to improve our onboarding process a little bit more, too, as well.
Okay. We can talk about that. Yeah. Derek, did I see your hand?
Yeah.
You're the one? Okay, sorry.
I was the one.
Okay.
Um, I just wanted to point out that we do, we do have, um, policy that kind of gives us permission certainly to talk about this. Um, and, um, we have an equity policy that's been in place for a number of years, and that's guidance for us in terms of our conduct. And I would admonish folks to read that policy again with this discussion in mind, in terms of individual responsibilities as a board member, to support the policies that we have passed. I gotta agree with Derek.
Okay, thanks.
Because I won't go through DEI training or things like that. I'm a middle-aged man, been here and there, backwards, forwards, up and down in the gutter, on the streets, lived it all, been there. I've been to Compton, California. I know my way around pretty well, and I don't need any rewiring training or anything like that. It's just my opinion of what DEI is, and I'm entitled to that opinion. So, that's just my stance. And he's exactly right. We have policies in place, and we are elected officials expected to follow said policies.
Well, training would still be good, but whether it's DEI or whether it's, it's other kinds of training, I mean, we can definitely assess out. And I think that's one of the big things that we're gonna need to do at our retreat this year is, is what exactly training do we want? And we will have that all sorted out for next year going forward, um, at our retreat. So, yes, ma'am.
I was just gonna suggest that maybe a better word than training is education. I don't know if that...
I was just gonna suggest that maybe a better word than training is education. I don't know if that softens it a bit. I mean.
It's professional development. You can call it that too. So I mean, it, you know.
And I don't, I wouldn't want the term to put you off of it, because I just sort of feel like I'm in the process of learning about this issue myself. I don't know much about this. You know, I know people in the trans community, but I don't live it, it's not my lived experience, so I don't know much. And I didn't grow up with an awareness the way my kids are growing up with it. So it's, it's a learning curve for me, for sure. And I don't, you know, I blunder, I call, use the wrong pronouns. I mean, it's, it's not that I feel like I need to be trained. But I like to read books, so I've read some books, and I don't, I'm no expert at all. But it gives me a little bit more of an insight into a lived experience of one person, the person who wrote the book or the character they wrote about. Something like that. So it's, and it's part of what we do, and that's just one example of what we do as a board. We learn about other things too, all sorts of things, like how to edit policies. You know, we. So, I don't know, I just hope that we wouldn't be put off by what we call it. Because it doesn't, it's not like we have to, it, it's not like 1984 where we're being rewired. It's more just like learn a new thing about kids.
Facts, you know?
What's that?
Just learn some facts, present some facts, what are experiences, what are, you know.
Yeah.
I think what we wanna say is that in August, when we get together for our retreat, I'm gonna have some stuff already done for us, but then there's also gonna be other stuff that I want your input in as far as what do we wanna learn about? What are some things that we need to know about in order to make informed decisions going forward? And that is going to include not just this particular issue, but other issues that are coming at us. So, you know, please, and we haven't done a lot of training. We've done it in the past, then we've kind of gotten out of it. So we need to make sure that it's part of our ongoing, maybe not training every month, but maybe training every other month or, you know, discussion, you know, have, like when Mrs. Breakley came, or Dr. Breakley came and gave us all of the training about, I don't remember what it was about, but Becky could. Yeah, there we go. That was a great training, and with new board members, it would be a great training to have again. So, yeah. So I just think we need to be cognizant that we are board members. We are held to a higher standard, as much as we hate to see that, and when we walk into a room, sometimes we're not seen as the person that we are, but as the hat that we, they know us as. And that can be difficult sometimes. So. But as a board, I would love everyone to say that they are for all students and that we will do everything we can to make them safe and give them the education that they deserve, and make sure they have the emotional and social, social emotional support that they need and whatever else it is. And sometimes we don't know that they need it because they don't tell us. But we need to find ways to do that too. And to, so, that is what I would like to say. Anyone else have anything they'd like to say?
I'd really like to translate this into an actionable step for us that we can say to the community.
So the actionable step is that we will, we will figure out where we can put this training in next, in next year's. That is the, that is as best I can give you right now, and that in August, once we come out of that retreat, we're gonna have more. We, we will have more of a step where we can say, this is what we're doing, but we are going to do it, but it's not gonna be done before the end of this year. That I can tell you. Okay?
Probably should craft a letter or something to.
Yeah, it's, like, I'm not stuck on this training idea. I'm stuck on the actionable step idea to say to the community, look, we're taking this seriously and we're doing something.
That we support all student outcomes, yeah?
Yeah, a public, a public acknowledgement.
It's a given that you support all student outcomes. I don't think it really needs to be reset. It's, it's part of the job.
Well, I feel like we're doing it right now, not that everybody would see it. I mean, we can write it in, in the paper. Lately, I feel like putting stuff in the paper is just a bunch of words on paper. Doesn't mean anything. I, I'd rather do the actionable step and say, hey, yes, we are going to be doing some of this and some of that, but we're, we're just not gonna be able to fit it into our schedule before the new year starts. But whatever, if you guys wanna write something up. But again, if you're gonna write it, then someone's gonna have to write it. We're gonna have to assess it out. It's gonna be another two weeks or longer before we send it out. Got an idea?
I'm just curious what the letter would say. I mean, cause as the board, I think we've made it kind of clear that this was an individual action, so. I don't know.
I think maybe tonight we have. It's, yeah, it's just about confidence from our constituents that we're.
Right. I mean, if someone were bringing, talk to you about this on the street, you know, you're gonna say, hey, we had this discussion at our May 2nd board meeting, and this is what we've decided, and this is what we're gonna do moving on, but that, every student. Every student, I'll, I'll just keep saying that over and over again. And I'll be honest, the last three things that have come down the pike and hit us in the head really ticked me off, because all I've really wanted to do is, we're so close to actually talking about student outcomes, and then we have to deal with, with this stuff which throws us off course, and that stinks. So. That's what I wanna get to. That's the, that's the part I wanna get to. And we usually get really close and then we don't, we, you know, yeah.
I would like to suggest that we try to get some input from the students. If there's, if there's an organized group that can have a position on this and communicate to us, or if there's other ways that we can get feedback from students, that's the group that we're talking about. That's our job, is to make sure that students, all students are safe. But I don't want to forget to ask the students about probably any decision. So that's why we have some student representation.
Do you have anything, either one of you wanna add? I don't mean to put you on the spot.
As a, as a queer and non-binary person on your, on your board. It. And as a, uh, you know, more progressive person when it comes to my political beliefs. It, it, it bothers me that, um, that. It, it bothers me that you haven't had more professional development, and it bothers me that you haven't had more of this training and this like, and this education. I remember once, probably when I first started coming to these meetings and stuff. There had been talk about, about maybe a, a, a professional development thing that you had, had just had, and not everyone showed up. And, and that also bothered me, that the people who were showing up were only the people who not didn't need to be there, but the people who were showing up were the ones who already believed in the things that were trying to be taught. And not necessarily the ones who could broaden their perspectives. But that is neither here nor there. And, and, and so, yeah, so it, it, it makes me happy that you're talking about more training and, and professional development.
Yeah?
Thank you. Could I follow up on that?
Sure.
The term professional development is, is being chucked around here, and I review the budget. I don't know if anybody else does on a two-week basis. And see a half a million, million and a half go out. And I know, and I think most people know, that over eighty percent of our budget is, goes to professional people who, by definition, have educated themselves. They're licensed. We offer benefits that contribute to their professional development. And I find it rather astounding that a lay group such as ours has the arrogance and the gall to second guess the professionals that we delegate decisions to and services to our students. And I think in order for us to be better board members, we have to think about that, and I ask the question, where's the model? What are we modeling as the leadership tier, the highest leadership tier in this professional organization? I think it behooves us to do professional development on topics that, that need attention and that need us to understand more. I'm a senior, I'm old, but I'm a lifelong learner. And I continue to learn, and I continue to appreciate what professional development can offer me. It helps me be a better leader. It helps me be a better human being. And as I said before, I think we need to listen to the students and not push our personal agendas. Because we're in a. We live on an evolutionary planet, and change is a constant. And we work in an institution which by definition resists change. It's an institution. However, we have to embrace change always. Because that's who we are, and that's who we need to be, so that we can do our work to support our students.
One quick comment if I could.
Sure.
Yes, superintendent, principal, certain college degrees, you got psychologists, all these types of things. We are elected by the citizens to provide oversight. We are elected. So it's not like, oh, we're God and anything like that. My point is, no, we're elected for a very good reason. Because sometimes it is boards like this who have to make this tough decisions and really say, look, this is someone who is technically educated more than me. You gotta go, or we gotta make a change. So that's why in the end we're assembled like this. Over, the president has oversight. You know, do this, do that, the other things. They can do that. They can impeach you, they can censor you, they can do all these things. So in the end, yeah, I'm the president, but in the end, you're still held accountable to the people who put you in place, so that's just my two cents.
Brett?
Just gonna say this again, cause I think it, it's really important, you know, everyone's opinions over time change, one way or another. And, and we, we don't need to get into a discussion about progressive, conservative, whatever. That's, this is not the place for that. But I think it's really important that any development that we do does put a smack dab in the middle and present both sides. Because that is critical to an understanding, and that we can all understand what each other is going through. I mean, I, in high school, I had a brother who was gay. I was the guy at the party who punched somebody because they were making homophobic remarks. And I'll also be the guy that sits here and says, we have our First Amendment rights, and that should not be interfered with either. So it's very important that we don't look at this from just one side and try to present all of the facts, so that everyone can make their own decision.
Okay, so I feel like our conversation has morphed into professional development and not really about what we wanted to talk about. So I wanna, unless someone else has something else they wanna say, I just wanna end our conversation on the fact that we heard what everyone had to say in, from public comment, from let's talk, from last two weeks ago, and we will do better. That is what we're here to do. And we will make sure that no one feels like they're not, that they don't belong, or that they. We just wanna make sure that they feel like they belong here, and that they're included, and that we have a level of inclusivity. So, okay. All right, we're gonna move on. Um, RNESU board update. I didn't tell either of my RNESU board members to prepare an update, so I'm gonna give the update this time. Last meeting, we had, actually ran over into this OVUU board meeting, so some of you already know what happened. But essentially what we did last meeting was talk about our preschool region, our pre-K region. And that, for those of you that don't know what the pre-K region is, is a pre-K region is our towns, all of our towns, which includes Barstow, Mendon, and all six towns in Otter Valley. And we have a closed border, so to speak, that means that our preschool kids that can go to preschool need to attend a preschool within our boundaries in order to access the funds that come from the state. They don't get that money. That money flows into our, into RNESU. We do have five transfer slots that we give out to students who feel that they cannot be in our district for whatever reason. They can go into our preschool lottery, or pre-K lottery, and they can access outside preschool if they're, if they're selected. And that money would follow them. We would pay for that money towards the preschool that they wanna go to.
Is that option used?
Uh, yes, it is. Yep, it's actually, yes. Usually, yeah. So and once you're in, if you get a slot as a third, three-year-old, you get to keep that slot for, as a four-year-old. So sometimes there's only two or three slots each year available, depending on how many kids are in. Does that make sense?
It does. So I guess I wanna ask a question about that, if that's possible, because some town people have come to me asking about that boundary. And I'm just trying to figure out what, what's their recourse and how do I.
So they can write a, yeah, so if they feel that they cannot access our preschools, they can request a voucher, or, yeah, it's a voucher. They write a letter to the RNESU board indicating what their reasoning is. And then we decide as a, as a board whether or not we will approve that.
And is that a procedure that's written somewhere?
Yes, it is. Yep, it absolutely is.
To guide me to that. Okay, thank you. I wasn't sure whose jurisdiction that decision was in.
Yeah.
Okay.
We have a pre-K coordinator now, Sarah Crossman. She can help.
Perfect. Okay, thank you.
So, so that was the big thing that we did at RNESU last meeting. Am I missing anything, Becky or Barbara?
I don't think so.
Okay. So, any questions about the RNESU board?
Just a reminder, we need to talk about Stafford, get that on the.
Oh, well, you were gonna tell me when you had a meeting.
There's, there's so much happening, I, I'd just like to do it as soon as possible.
Okay, so I'll put it on, it probably, yeah, I'll see where I can put it. All right, so Stafford. Thank you, I will do that. Okay, moving on. Yes, we can. I'm sure we can. Uh, review board annual work plan. So, one of the things about the work plan that needs to be discussed is that Kristin is not going to be here for our June 6th meeting. So, in talking with her, we decided, although you guys get the final decision, that we would only have one meeting in June, and that would be our June 20th meeting. And so I just wanna know if that's okay with everyone.
End of the year sounds pretty simple to me.
I know. So the one, the couple of things that we will be discussing at that meeting is if there's any surplus funds, we'll decide where to put those surplus funds. And then there's a bunch of stuff you'll see on the work plan that.
Equity.
Right, there's equity, but I'm talking about normal stuff. Summer orders, thing, it's, it's not anything that we can't do in one meeting. It might last a little longer than normal, but I think we can get it done in one meeting if everyone is agreeable. And plus, it's so close to graduation. Who wants to come to a meeting on June 6th?
This is true.
Right?
Right.
A required motion?
No, it doesn't. It's just you saying yes or no. So, I mean, raise your hands, I suppose. Is everyone okay with quashing the June 6th meeting, and we'll just have June 20? Okay, perfect. Then that is the only thing we need to talk about for the work plan. Communication, superintendent information.
Yeah, um.
Yeah, just an FYI, we did set the last day of school, the RNESU Board did that last time, as Friday, June 16th, and just for the OVU Board to know, on January 18th, Otter Valley High School didn't have school because of a heating issue, that day was turned into a staff day, so that's just an FYI. Global ends monitoring, this will be the first time we have a real hard look at our global ends, next meeting, I'm pretty excited about it. On this meeting, our principals are putting, working, to put together a presentation on how are our students doing, with a focus on our ends, and specifically at grades 2, 6, 8, and 12, as outlined in our ends policy, and hopefully, we have most of our principals that are able to join us. I already talked about the elementary choice, just an update, we have five at this point, again, there are many that are sort of waiting to hear where it is, so I will send a message out to the five applications that we have, and I will tell all families, hey, this is the policy, and here's how you can grab ahold of it. Adult Code of Conduct, unrelated to the Board Code of Conduct, we do have a new RNESU Adult Code of Conduct, it's currently listed on our webpage under School/Community Relations, it governs adult, adult code of conduct in our buildings, and it basically says, schools and RNESU are committed to maintaining learning environments that are physically and emotionally safe for all children and adults, and that code of conduct informs us of our expectations for behavior while on school premises, and when communicating with other adults involved in the care and education of kids in our communities. So, that's linked in, in there as well, and again, that's to guide visitors in our building, parents in our building, really, anyone who works in our building, and what our expectations are to keep our kids in school safe.
Great. So, our next board meeting is set for Tuesday, May 16th, sorry, I can't read without my glasses on, and anyway, it's gonna be here, six o'clock. We are going to have our first look at some student outcomes, very exciting for me, anyway, and so, we do have to have executive session, so I would entertain a motion to go into executive session.
I love that we're going to executive session.
7:53, so Fernanda and Kevin, so at this time, we'll ask every, oh, and we're gonna have Mr. Rappel here, and I believe there's a family?
Yep.
They're here.
Right, I, but do you need to know the family?
No.
No?
No, 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 just to read.
Okay, right, so.
For student issue.
Student issue.
Student issue.
So, thank you guys for coming.